There we go. So we are now recording. And I'll let you know as soon as I see how many participants we got. So far, 16 participants. Very good. So everybody's doing well.
Commissioner Kofalas and Chairman Choat will hand over to reins to you whenever you're ready to start off.
Thank you, Leslie. I'd just like to welcome everyone. Appreciate this opportunity to have this joint work session with the Planning Commission to discuss the Phase Two land use code updates and some of the details of that. We do have two new commissioners, county commissioners, and also, I think Jordana Barack has been elevated to, oh, there she is. Been elevated to a panelist, and she is the person that we, the board interviewed, we interviewed five people. And ultimately, we recommended Jordana to be appointed to the Planning Commission, and that will officially take place on next Tuesday Administrative Matters Meeting. But I would think with the chair's concurrence, that we should somehow figure out a way to go around and do some introductions. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Welcome, Jordana. And you know what we usually do for our public hearings, and you're gonna, my understanding is you'll be, hopefully, appointed by next Wednesday when we have a public hearing. And so what we usually do is just go around and say a little bit about ourselves to the public that's either in the room or online, as it's been for the last many months. I live near Stout, which is the south, very south end of Horse Tooth Reservoir. And I've been on the Planning Commission for about three years. All the other planning commissioners want to chime in?
Hello and welcome. I'm Abby Pontius, and I've been on the Planning Commission since July last year, so not too long. So we'll be learning a lot of things together, and I live outside of Estes Park between Drake and Estes in the Big Thompson Canyon. So welcome and thank you.
Hi, I'm John Barnett, and this is my second year on the Planning Commission, and I live in Fort Collins.
Hi, Jordana. My name is Ann Best Johnson, and I live in the Windsor area. And I believe this is my third year on the Planning Commission, and we're glad to have you.
Hey, Jordana. My name's Gary Green. I work up in Wellington as the fire chief, and I live in northeast Fort Collins, and I've been on Planning Commission for four months now, five months.
Hi, Jordana. I'm Sean Dowdery. I live in the Pooter Canyon, and this is my 11th year on the Planning Commission.
You're muted, Nancy.
All right. I, my name is.
Oh, try again.
All right. My name is Nancy Wallace. I live north of Fort Collins in the Waverly area, and I have been on the Planning Commission a little over 15 years.
I think all that, that's all the planning commissioners, Commissioner Kofalas, would you like the new Board of County Commissioners to introduce themselves?
Yes, Matt, I would like that very much. Thank you, sir.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kristin Stevens, newly elected, or not newly elected, but newly sworn in, I guess. I think tomorrow or the next day is a month in this position, so it's nice to meet all of you. I've observed your work and have watched some of your meetings. So thank you for your service and looking forward to having this discussion tonight. I think that's it. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jody Shaq McAlley. I'm the newly elected or newly sworn in as well, Laramie County Commissioner for District Three, and the first woman to ever serve in this seat. And I'm very glad to be here tonight and grateful to work alongside you. Thank you all for your service on the Planning Commission. I know how important it is and how much work and effort you put into it, and I want to thank you now for your service. I live west of Loveland in unincorporated Laramie County, kind of just a couple of miles south of, well, about little, almost three miles south of the Devil's Backbone along, near the Big Thompson River. And behind me is a picture of Lily Lake and Rocky Mountain Steel Park. Some of you might recognize that. I'm a big hiker and just grateful to be here. And I did participate, I've seen several of your meetings in different arenas, and also I was very active in the comprehensive plan process and attended several meetings for the oil and gas regulations and the community forums and stuff. So I have been kind of active in following along as we, as you've been doing this work. So thank you for, again, for all being here tonight and for your service.
Thank you, fellow commissioners, county commissioners, and thank you, Planning Commission members. I think that we can all agree that whether you're serving on the Board of County Commissioners or the Planning Commission, sometimes you lose track of time. But with that said, I would turn it over to the Chair, Mr. Bob, and I think we're ready to turn it over to our staff to outline the process for tonight. Thank you.
Can I just ask one thing? Because I haven't met Jordana yet. Maybe you can tell us a quick, a little bit about yourself.
Absolutely. Right spot on, Bob, yes.
Thank you, everyone, for the welcome. It's really fun to visualize where everyone is around the county. I live just north of Fort Collins city limits, up near Long Pond. And previously, so I work as an executive director for the Mighty Arrow Family Foundation. We do a lot of granting and research in land and water stewardship, climate resilience, social justice work, and then also food systems. And previously to that, I was with New Belgium Brewing for 10 years, worked as their corporate secretary, and worked on water security issues for the brewery. So I'm really excited to apply some of my knowledge and exposure through my other work to what we're doing with the Laramie County Planning. So I'm eager to help jump in.
Thanks, Jimmy. Thank you, sir. Thank you for that.
Well, we have, who's leading the discussion on the Phase Two objectives for our land use code? Leslie, please.
I'll jump in and just get the ball rolling, and then we have a number of us from the staff team and the consultant team who will be joining as well in that. And I'd like to acknowledge, too, we have about 30 people online watching this meeting. So the way these work sessions normally work is that it's a chance for the commissioner, the Planning Commission, and the commissioners to have a discussion. There's maybe direction given, but no decisions at these meeting, and the public are welcome to observe. There aren't opportunities for public to speak at these meetings. We are recording this meeting. However, and we can make it available if people want to follow up and see the information. So just so everybody knows what is happening. And then you all should have received a summary report with some information with information about Phase Two of the land use code for tonight. And what we're anticipating the agenda for tonight is to spend time on the land use code update, which includes a number of topics as well as a deeper dive into two topics. One is the sign code, and another is the oil and gas regulations that are both chapters within our land use code and that we had identified for work to be done in this coming year. So the way we were anticipating the agenda might go this evening is that, and this summarized in your memo, but the purpose is really to work with you all to confirm that we've got the right topics and schedule around those topics and that we'd like to get your feedback and input around public engagement goals and ways to include members of the public and highlight the project's objectives and timeline for each segment of the code and then get some initial guidance on those more specific topics around oil and gas and signs. We were anticipating that we would go through in the order of focusing around kind of the broader timeline and schedule and public engagement and then go into sign regulations and oil and gas. But I would, I guess, ask the Chair, the two chairmen, if you would prefer that we do things in another order. I think probably many members of the public who are here may be interested in the oil and gas topic. And I was going to lead off with just a kind of a broad brush overview of all the topics and then hand it off to our consultants next. We should probably also briefly do some staff introductions and consultant introductions before we dive into that. But why don't I stop for a moment and just do a schedule check, an agenda check, and see if you have any preference in the order. Commissioner Kofalas or Chair Choat?
I don't have any preference. I mean, if you think that there will be plenty of people who are watching and then want to drop off after hearing about the portion of the oil and gas regulations, and I'm okay with starting there after your overview.
Thank you. I would agree that I think it's important to give, provide the overview, and then the next more specific item would be the oil and gas regs. And we can get into the sign code regulations later on. I believe Commissioner Dowdery had his hand up, and he might have some insights here as well.
I actually, I was actually hopeful that we could go through the overview of what we're going to be looking at and possibly add one note to that just to try and find and resolve any unintended consequences that we may have found from Phase One that might not have been caught before that was put into play.
Okay, we can touch on that, too. We do have a proposal around that as well. So as I hear it, we will do the broad overview, and then we'll do the oil and gas regulations, and then we'll do some code, and then we can touch on that item as well. So if you don't mind, we'll just do some very quick staff introductions. I should introduce myself, Leslie Ellis, the Community Development Director, and Matt Lafferty and others who are online. If you'd like to just introduce yourselves very quickly, and then I'll introduce the consultants as well.
Thanks. My name is Matt Lafferty, and I'm the principal planner for long-range planning at the Laramie County. I've been here for 23, 24 years and have been working on the comprehensive plan and the land use code for the last three and a half, four years. So I'm pretty engaged in all these topics and look forward to working with all the new planning commissioners and Board of County Commissioners. And I'm excited to see that we had a good attendance tonight from the public. It's good to see participation from our public. So thank you. I'll turn over to Frank or to Don.
I'm Frank Howg. I'm with the County Attorney's Office and just happy to be here to help.
I'm Don Threewood, current Planning Manager. I've been with the county for a little over a year. And in attendance tonight, we do have, I think, all of our staff planners, as well as a couple of co-compliance listening in, so.
Okay, and Lori, I see you there, too. I'm not sure if you're plugged in or not. There you are.
I am. A full video doesn't work very long or very well sometimes, so I'll be off most of the time.
Evening, everyone. I'm Lori Cadridge. I've been with the county just about two years, but I've been in the public sector for many years. And I'm the Service Area Director for Laramie County, and the Community Development Team is part of our service area. I also helped with the oil and gas regulations when we were developing them.
Okay, thank you. And then I have the honor to have introducing our consultant team, who Clarion Associates, who has worked, we've worked alongside them for the past year and a half on the code, on the first phase of the code, and now entering into the second phase of the code. And so I'll pass it along to Matt, and if you all would like to introduce yourselves as well, that would be great. Thank you.
Sure. Thanks, Leslie. Hello, everyone. Good to see you tonight. Thanks for your time. My name is Matt Goble. I'm the Project Manager for Clarion Associates, and I'm joined by three of my colleagues tonight, and I will pass it down the line. I'll start with Elizabeth. Pass it to you.
Thanks, Matt. I'm Elizabeth Garvin. I'm an attorney and planner, and I am happy to be with everybody as part of the consultant team tonight.
Hey, everyone. I'm Austin Flanagan with Clarion Associates. Also really excited to be here tonight, and I'll pass it over to Gabby.
Thanks. Hi, everyone. My name is Gabby Hart. I am an associate with Clarion Associates, and I look forward to moving into Phase Two with you all.
Okay, and Leah, I see you there, too. We missed you and the staff. So if you wouldn't mind, please introduce yourself, and then that's the last introduction. Thank you.
No, it's okay. We're over there in the north end of town. Nobody pays attention. I'm Leah Schleider. I'm with the Environmental Health Department. And I have been with the county for probably 17 years, but I've only been in the environmental planning position for about three. And I also oversee our air quality program, solid and hazardous waste, and zoonosis. So probably jack of all trades, but master of none.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Sometimes it takes a little longer to do that in Zoom, but it's good for everybody to know who's on the screen here. And again, we have lots of people watching, including many staff and many members of the public. So thank you for being on and participating. So I'm going to quickly hand it off to Matt Goble here and Matt Lafferty to walk through the aspects of the code. We're really excited to have this kickoff discussion on Phase Two of the code. We finished Phase One of the code at the end of last year, and we had identified a list of topics that you have noted in your packet. And we should say, too, if members of the public are looking for this report, it is available on the Planning Commission webpage under the current agenda and materials for this work session, so you can access a copy of that there. And it lists the topics that we'll talk about tonight. And so Matt will go through that in the schedule. Both Matts will do that. I did want to talk, we are going to go into the oil and gas topic briefly later. I wanted to put an emphasis on public engagement around all of these topics, really, but especially, I think we've heard a lot of concerns and questions, most specifically lately, about oil and gas, and will there be opportunities for public to engage? And how will those opportunities play out? So we'll get into a lot of those opportunities for engagement and methods for looking at the different components of the regulations as we get into that topic. I think if the commissioners, if any of you are looking for process items that are different than what's been conveyed tonight, as we work through the different topics, we're going to try to keep us moving along and keep some time limits to just really take your pulse and make sure we've got the right topics, that you feel like we've got the right level of engagement, that we're identifying who needs to be involved in the different topics. It's probably going to vary a bit from topic to topic. For instance, if we're talking about housing topics, there are going to be different interest groups and members of the community who would be interested in that versus, say, the sign code versus oil and gas. So we want to make sure we're identifying folks who would be interested in participating in those different things as we go. So we'll stop and ask you questions about each of those subjects. So I think with that, we're probably ready to hand it off to you, Matt Goble, and to start to walk us through higher level, big picture, all the topics. And then we'll take pauses and invite your input. And I think if you have questions as we go, please let us know or comments. We'll take lots of notes, and as I said, we're recording this meeting as well.
All right. Thanks, Leslie. I will go ahead and jump right in. So for those of you who have been with us for the last year and a half, y'all know what we did with Phase One. We had an aggressive schedule moving forward to rewrite and improve the land code, land use code for Laramie County, and we met the timeline. It was great. But in doing so, we broke out the project into two phases, and you were all with us for Phase One, which was the bulk of the work, the reorganization of the code, a lot of the restructuring of the zone districts and the master use table. A lot of the nuts and bolts were accomplished in Phase One. But now, for you all moving forward, and for the new commissioners, we're moving into what we call Phase Two, which was a set of targeted updates, which were topics that we knew needed to be looked at, but they needed a little bit of a deeper dive than we really had time for in that first Phase One schedule, or perhaps they needed a bit more public engagement than we had time for in that first schedule. And so Phase Two is really structured as a collection of topics that we knew early on we wanted to come back and revisit. So I'm going to start sharing my screen, and we sent you all a background memo, and it starts on page four of your packet. And let's see if I can show that here. Nope. So it's my email. There we go. You all see that? All right. So this is the email that's on page four, and what we're all going to do is really just walk through the various topics that are, that are part of Phase Two. And like Leslie said, it's going to be fairly broad brush. We want to make sure that we have gotten the topic list right. We want to make sure that we capture any immediate comments you might have on these topics. And we also want to make sure that we've got the order of the topics right as we move forward. So those are all kinds of things to think about. The first piece that I want to pause on is public engagement, and that is the first piece of this memo. It's at the top of page five of your packet, and you can see this chart here, which is a summary of the public engagements that's proposed. But it also serves as just a good summary of all the topics in Phase Two. And the big picture idea here, it looks a little complex with the different symbols, but it's pretty straightforward. The big picture idea is that we've got essentially three buckets of tasks moving forward, and they're going to be staggered in terms of their finish date and their potential adoption. And so the first line, the first row, is a district transition strategy. How can we start to move forward in applying some of the new and modified zone districts? And so that's one of the first pieces that we'll look at. That is, we'll talk about it tonight in the February work session. We'll talk about it in more detail in the March work session, but that is intended to be finished by the end of March to actually go into place by the effective date of the new code. And as we'll talk about a little bit later on, this is actually a long-term strategy, just the initial implementation of that will go into effect immediately. But, but the overall strategy will be talked about right up front. The second bucket of issues is the next two rows there, sign regulations and oil and gas. And you can see, we're kicking those off tonight with a brief conversation. We will have more in-depth discussion in March at your work session. We'll also have public open houses on those topics, and those will be scheduled for the adoption process in April and May. And then the third bucket of issues is the next three rows of the table. It's the development standards, parking and landscaping, et cetera, supplemental regulations for Estes Valley, and some targeted updates to certain use regulations, especially agricultural uses and campgrounds and various types of housing uses. Those are all intended to come back later in the spring and then move through the summer. So they'll kind of be following along as the third bucket scheduled for later adoption in the, in the early fall. So the goal is that we'll be able to come back and present a consolidated set of amendments for all those topics, development standards, Estes, and use regulations in September for you all. So you can see that we've got specific checkmarks there for various public open houses. Those are a little bit to be determined because they are going to have different groups that are interested in the different topics. I think the sign regulations is probably going to have a little bit more targeted and different stakeholder involvement than the oil and gas facilities. Just like the different topics like ag down below, we'll have a different set of stakeholder opportunities as well. And so we're staying a little bit general at this meeting tonight on what those engagement opportunities will exactly look like. But just rest assured, we know that there will need to be, you know, public eyes on those different topics as they move forward.
Hey, Matt.
And Matt, we will get more specific on, on oil and gas and signs for tonight, so we'll come back to those after this part of the meeting.
And it shows a little bit more robust type of public engagement. So we'll be looking at those very specifically.
Anything else on this table, Leslie or Matt?
No, I just wanted to point out that some of these topics, such as the housing subject or the agricultural topics, they're all pretty much can start now. We might actually be programming some meetings and stuff starting in the next month and working on them more long range because they have a longer horizon that we can work on them, and we can get deeper and have a lot more conversations about them. The ones that we felt that we could accomplish in a, in a more early fashion and try to get into place earlier in the year are those, the sign regs and oil and gas. We thought that they were more important to be addressed upfront, and that's why they are moved to the top and have a shorter timeline. Those that we felt it was important to get them updated and get them put into place. And then that gives us a little time to work on some of those other issues at a later point. So we'll be coming back to those in the future.
I guess the one other thing I would say on this chart is regarding those final three rows, the development standards, the Estes Valley rags, and the use regulations. If you look at the way they're distributed over the months, they're kind of back and forth, and so that's intentional. The intent is that at the April work session, we would bring you initial materials for review and discussion on the first two topics, development standards and Estes. Then in May, we'd come back for an initial discussion of use regulations while we're working in the background on the first two. Then we'd come back in June to give you a more polished product on the first two, and then a more polished product on the use regulations in July. So there is a little bit of method to the madness there behind the hopscotch. We're also cognizant that y'all have a lot of other things on your plate besides the code updates. And so if we're able to combine these on, in some months and not take your time on one or two of these work sessions, we'll, we'll definitely try to do that.
Matt and Leslie, regarding the timelines for some of these things, particularly the oil and gas, is the appropriate time to just talk about adjusting that timeline is when we get into a deeper, tonight, when we get into the particular topic?
I would say so, Commissioner, because we'll show you a more detailed schedule and talk about the proposal for how we would anticipate working through those standards and the analysis that we'd do and then that we would do opportunities for the public. And then if you feel like at that point, after you've heard that input, that you think there are adjustments needed, then we welcome that input at that point. So I think right now it's a little bit broad in general, so it might be better to wait until then if you're okay with that.
Absolutely, and thank you, Leslie.
All right. I'm going to go ahead and start scrolling down now. The balance of this memo, again, this is all in your packet, just goes through each of these topics in more detail. And what we've tried to do is just give you a sense of what has been accomplished in Phase One, and then also what the Phase Two remaining work is for each of these topics. And y'all can, y'all can read this in detail on your own, but I'll just hit some of the high points just to explain the topics. Mapping the new districts, you know that we made refinements to some of the zone districts. We also introduced some brand-new districts that are not on the zoning map at all right now. And so the whole purpose of this task is just to think through a long-term strategy to ensure that the new zoning tools that have been developed are actually used and to put in place. In our experience, when you create new zone districts, you need to follow up as elected officials and think through opportunities to, you know, encourage those tools to be used while people still remember, you know, what the intent was. And so some of the mixed-use districts, you know, for example, you know, we need to think about, are there incentives that might be appropriate to get some of those, to have discussions with property owners about where they might want to see those districts in the future? The new ag districts that we looked at, you know, are there potential incentives that we could think about to encourage use of those districts? So the whole, the whole task here is really to identify a high-level strategy and potential incentives that could be used. It's not actually to make all those map changes. We know that all those particular changes are probably going to require, you know, months or years, and they'll require a lot of detailed work, you know, reaching out to property owners and the public. But again, this is just kind of the high-level strategy, getting it in writing and getting that toolbox in place. So that's, that's to be completed by the adoption of the new code. That is just that strategy. Then we start to get into more substantive topics, and, and this is my second bucket of issues that I showed you on that table. This is two main topics here. It's the sign piece, and it's the oil and gas piece. And I'm going to go real quickly through these because they're going to get more detailed attention later in this meeting. But bottom line, on the sign piece, we, we did reformat. But bottom line on the sign piece, we we did reformatting and we pulled it forward to match the new phase one overall structure. We we updated the list of zone districts, but there's a lot of additional targeted updates that need to be done. That my colleague Elizabeth will walk you through later in the meeting. And then oil and gas, this is one where the county is taking the lead on updating those regulations to ensure compliance with the new state regulations. And as whoops, sorry about my. My mouse pad is touchy tonight. The the. Yeah, sorry guys. The oil and gas piece we're going to talk about later on. There also potentially is some issues related to the 1041 regulations, the areas and activities of state interest. Are are part of the code and there is potential interest in looking at. Changes to the approval criteria for the 1041. If if that is something that, you know, we have the time and resources to look at and the staff and you all decide as a priority. Then that is contemplated as part of this larger second bucket of issues. And then on a similar.
On that.
Sure, Matt, please.
I'll chime in real quick on that. That's for everybody that that areas of activities and state interests, as Matt said, is our 1041 regulations. And really, state law really defines what we can and cannot regulate by 1041 regulations. And we have a large body of the things in there that we do regulate. Our plants and our lines and reservoirs and those types of things are currently in our 1041 rigs. The issue came up last year that we might want to look at the 1041 rigs from the standpoint. As to whether or not the review criteria for approving those applications. Is is what the board of county commissioners wants and is is. Actually working well. And so. I'll just open the floor. I'd like to open the floor for maybe two minutes, just to see if there's anybody that has a comment on that to think. Do we believe that the review criteria that come out of the 1041 regulations? Is something that we want to focus on with this code amendment? And if so, we will we'll focus on those, but our anticipation wasn't to dig way deep into these regulations and determine. New uses or anything like that. It was really to. Maybe just stay focused on that topic. So. Do any of the commissioners have a comment on that?
Matt, if I may ask a question. Have there been any questions or complaints about the criteria that we have? I know we did a very deep dive when we put 1041 into play in the first place. But we hit it pretty well out of the park and it's worked as intended. Is is there something? Some sort of question that the department feels that we need to address?
I would keep the floor open. I think Commissioner Doherty that. A lot of it just came up with when we were doing. One of our previous 1041 applications as to whether or not the criteria was effective. And it really didn't come from staff. It was more from the commissioner level. So maybe Commissioner Falls could share some of his thoughts as to. I think it partly came from Commissioner Falls' thoughts on that. So. Maybe you want to add something to that, Commissioner Falls?
Thank you, Matt. And just as a. Point of clarification, I. You mentioned that the state law dictates the scope of authority that we have in matters of state interest. I I thought we had some ability to look at that because I I thought that our. Our scope of authority was pretty limited in terms of. And and so I thought that was going to be part, if we agreed to move forward on reviewing some of the 1041, it wasn't just the review criteria. But what it was also looking at. What else we might include as as matters of state interest, but perhaps I'm wrong.
Well, if if, and that was partly the question, if that's the case, that we want to look a little bit more broadly. We can come back. You know, with one of these future work sessions and present to you what. The state statutes say we can regulate under 1041 and have a little bit broader discussion on that. And then if we need to dive into that a little bit further, we can. So we'll keep that on the list and and try to come up with a program for addressing those types of issues.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
I think personally that it would be a good idea to review those again. They're really important criteria and you know, we did them. It's been a number of years and it never hurts to look at what you've got going and what's happened and. And see if there are tweaks that would make them better. So I would support a review of that. Maybe maybe we don't need to do it in great depth, but at least. Take a shot at, you know, is there are there things we need to do?
Thank you. Anybody else?
I I would, I'm in an agreement. I think that looking at the review criteria at very least is really important, but if there are. Other areas that we are allowed to regulate, I mean, I guess it would be good to know those. And and so I would appreciate a work session and. And and be able to dive into that to see if we do want to look at those.
Okay, well, we'll plan on bringing this back at one of the future work sessions. Commissioner Shattuck McNally?
Yes, I would like to confer, agree with my colleague, Commissioner, County Commissioner colleagues that. I do think it's important that we review that 1041 process and the criteria, and I'd like to take a little deeper dive and. Have a work session and explore that. And I agree with and echo my fellow county commissioner comments.
Hey Matt, I would also, if you're you're going to do that, just an idea is maybe give us a rundown in the future at that work session of what 1041 permits. The county has considered approved or rejected in the last, you know, five or six years or however long. Just so we have. How it's gone so far.
Okay.
Matt, I think it might be worthwhile to take a look at what some of the other counties are doing with regard to 1041. So that we have maybe a range of options. Just so we see. Kind of what our options might be.
And along those lines, John Barnett and colleagues. I am. I previously directed my intern to look into that matter of, you know, what are other counties doing? And what could we learn from that? So Matt, it might be good to check in with the intern and see what progress she's made on on looking into that to to try to help this process.
Okay, thank you very much. I think that was that was the information that we needed. As we go through, this is the kind of conversation we wanted to, we just got to keep on track. So thanks. I think we've got good direction on that. And I'll turn it back over to Matt.
Thanks, Matt. So the next topic is is a little bit in the same vein. It's density transfer. And this is a topic that we had originally at the beginning of the project had thought might need some more attention. In terms of establishing a new density transfer program. And so we had held it off until phase two. But now following, I'm sorry, my mouse has really given me problems tonight. Now, following the discussions in. At the end of phase one. I think that the proposal from 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 Matt and Leslie and the staff is that we we don't move forward with the density transfers. It's not really a high priority. To get done in this immediate short term set of phase two amendments. A TDR program can be complex to establish. But it's, you know, it's it's not brand new for Laramie County. Y'all did have a system in place in Redfeather Lakes. It wouldn't be starting from scratch. It would be going back and looking at what you had and seeing how it would need to be modified. And in particular, where it would be appropriate in the county. Ultimately, that's worthwhile and a density transfer system could be valuable. It's just not being proposed as part of this immediate scope of work right now. But I think I think Matt and Leslie wanted to hear y'all's thoughts on that. And if you if you disagree, and if you do think it is a priority that should move forward right now.
And I'll, Matt, I'll just add in very quickly. I think this is the kind of thing that we could do. At the time when we are in discussions with one of our municipal municipalities in the county. Many of the municipalities are finishing comprehensive plans. Berthold, for instance, is doing a plan that contemplates conservation of open. Lands around its periphery. And so there may be opportunities in the future to work with one or more of those municipalities to reestablish a program. But I think that the time may not be right now, given that many of them are in that planning process. So. Yes, so we would like to hear your feedback on if you. Be the potential in this and if so, when and how.
My comment would be that we should do at least enough regulations so that that is an alternative that's available some way or another. And then develop the actual process and where it would be when we see an opportunity. I'd like to see it stay in the somehow or another stay in the code as as a placeholder so that it doesn't get dropped out completely. But if we don't have something that's right immediately on the horizon, it probably is, these others are probably more important and it could wait until a future date when there is something that comes up. But I don't want to see dropout permanently. So people say, well, we're not going to do those kinds of things.
Commissioner Wallace and other commissioners, the. The. When the fossil creek reservoir TDU program wrapped up, we did remove it from the code in its entirety. We still have the program. On paper and all that and still in available to us. It's just we don't have anywhere to apply it to. And until we have somewhere to apply it to. Putting it in the code is just taking up space and and we would have to figure out whether or not it's got all the right tools attached to it. So. We were hoping that. You know, when it's somebody like a Berthold or somebody steps up and says. This is a good way to use it, then we'll just return it back on and we'll. Make sure that it works for that instance because it'll have to be tweaked a little bit.
Thank you, Matt. And. Chairman Cho, is it okay that we're doing this or do we need, should we be going through you, sir?
Oh, no. This is great.
I'm I'm really into the Roberts rules and the the chair has some role in helping to guide things, but. I thank you, Matt, if I and I just to respond, is there any logic? To. Perhaps like Nancy suggesting placeholder, I mean, would that help incentivize some of the the municipalities to engage in some of these agreements or these, you know, the. These discussions if we had it in the code or or referenced it or something like that?
I I don't. Commissioner Falls, I don't know that it would really incentivize anything. It would. I think as we go through, like we just did with Timoth and we probably will again with Berthold and Johnstown and other communities and we start to. Redefine our GMA and growth management boundaries with them and our intergovernmental agreements with them. That will be a really good time for us to say, hey, we still have a TDU program. That we've got outlined that worked very well in the past. Would you like to work with us on that? And if so, then we'll we'll. Refine that program around that community and then make sure that we insert it into the code. Rather than coming back and having to say, well, we got to amend it because they want to do it a little different than it was the previous way.
That seems logical, Matt, but.
And I agree with all of the commissioners' conversations on that. We don't want to lose sight of the TDO program. I think that there's. A lot of great opportunity in the future to use it. And use it to the benefit of both Laramie County and our local municipalities. We just got to go back and open those conversations up. So we'll keep that on the on the radar as we work with them.
And again, I I think anything that doesn't make this list, we're not completely, you know, taking it off the table. We're just, you know, moving it till, you know, late September or after that. So it's just. Trying to identify our priority list immediately moving forward.
Okay. Thank you.
So that's the end of the first bucket of issues. And again, that's scheduled for adoption earlier in the year by. The the late spring. The next bucket of issues that we talked about starts to get a little bit more. Further out. So this is the 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 second bucket. This is the. The development standards that I'll talk about. First of all, this is going to be. Building on things that we did in phase one. So in phase one, we took your existing parking regulations. We essentially moved it moved them forward and reformatted them to match the new code. We did go through the parking table, the table of minimum parking requirements, and we updated it to match all the new use types and the revised use names that are in the new use table. The the thing that needs to be done now with parking in phase two is to go further. In distinguishing different types of parking standards for different character areas. So thinking about parking standards that may be different, you know, right outside Fort Collins or in the more urbanized parts of the counties versus the more rural parts of the counties. And so that's what we mean on this on this sheet when we say, you know, consider additional context specific standards. You know, do we, you know, present potentially, you know, remove compact space standards in rural areas? We we did one example of that in the phase one code adoption. Where we took out the requirement for paving for parking areas in rural areas. So that's the that that's the first thing we did to start to be more context sensitive. But this whole set of phase two issues is just to carry that idea for further. And to take another look at the whole parking section with an eye towards being more tailored. So it's not a one size fits all for the whole county. That's going to be in the amount of parking that's required. It's also going to be in the parking lot layout standards. So I'm going to keep going through here. There's another couple of topics that are in the same vein. So landscaping. We carried forward your existing standards, but now there's a need to go back and look at the landscaping standards again. And try to revise them as appropriate to be more reflective of those new character areas. In addition, to try to bring in the the staff from the National Resources Department to to help with that, to to be more specific on those character areas.
I would add on the on the landscaping section is to consider, you know, water usage and and those types of things. It's it doesn't make sense to put a bunch of lush trees out in some of the rural landscape if we don't have to. So. Being context sensitive is also to be sensitive to some of the. Resources that it takes to keep those things alive and and looking good and doing all that. It may be appropriate to say in certain areas, you got. A more intense standard in other areas. You got a much lesser standard by virtue of availability of water or other types of resources.
Matt and Mr. Chair, I just would like to add a little bit to this part of the conversation. So we're talking about development standards and landscaping. And I'm sure you folks know that. Throughout the phase one process, I've. Brought up the issue of. How do we make our land use? Code conducive to. Wise water usage and encouraging. You know, efficiencies, conservation. And I'm just wondering if. If this is how we're going to address the integration of land use planning with water use planning. Is it just through landscaping or is that a different topic? Because in my view, for what it's worth. I I just think this is a big deal that that somehow we need to find ways to, you know. Whether it's like ag related stuff, how do we encourage water sharing agreements or residential? How do we incentivize? Well, you folks know what I mean. And so I'm wondering if that's a different topic. I I I'd just like to see more comprehensive review of integrating land use and water use. In our planning in light of the the scarcity of, you know, water quantity and water quality.
Those are, those are very good points. And I think that. That. The the struggle with some of that is what is policy oriented and what's actually code oriented? So so what can we develop as a standard? We can certainly talk about. Types of landscaping and things like that that are more water tolerant. We can talk some, talk about. Things like how much landscaping or or lot area are you allowed to have landscaping on, things like that to be water wise and whatnot. But to get into how water is functions throughout Laramie County, let's say from. Like you were saying, between ag uses and whatnot, that that largely becomes a policy issue and whether or not there needs to be. A program developed around that. And those are a lot bigger issues. I'm sure that they will affect land use in the long run. But I think we got to think about those in a in a little bit larger context and hopefully through these processes, we can start to define those.
Thank you, Matt. And Chairman Cho, may I continue this dialogue? Thank you. I I appreciate that, Matt. And I guess some, an example of. And and you guys know what you're doing. I, you know, I I'm still learning, but. I don't know. I i i is it, is it appropriate? Is it policy or is it? Updating our land use code to encourage, for example, what we're seeing in Weld County where they're looking at a rather significant. Aqua for storage project, the Terry Ranch project. I mean. Is it land use code or is it policy that would allow us to consider? Is it land use code or is it policy that would allow us to consider options like that in Laramie County? Does that make sense, Matt and colleagues?
Yeah, it does. I I just will have to talk about that as we go through. It wasn't a high level topic on here, but. Certainly, I think some of the topics that are still on the list, such as housing and some of those things. Can actually encompass some of that conversation as well. It doesn't have to be limited to landscaping. It could fall into the housing scheme. It could fall into some of the other. Topics that are coming up and then we will try to flush it out and and be as effective as we can.
That's great. I just hope we can keep an open mind for further discussion on this.
Yes, sir.
One of the issues is with that kind of integration of water and land use plans. It's particularly challenging for a county where the county is not a water provider. So from that standpoint, it becomes critical to begin a dialogue, particularly with the water districts. In terms of how they manage their programs and how they require water dedications and a number of other things, but it's. I think there's a lot that can be done in that area with that cooperation. It may be worthwhile to think about beginning that dialogue at some level because it will take a while.
Yep. And and I think that a water conservation, water stewardship is an aspirational principle or goal. That can be supported with policies, strategies and actions, but to but to. Limit the goal to a specific project might not be the what we want for the comp plan, which is meant to be that thirty thousand foot. View, but in and and or even in the land use code. It 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 really does reckon, you know, reckon back to what Matt was saying that it's a that it becomes a policy. So, you know, have have these overarching goals and statements that we want to achieve, but then leave. The mechanism on how to achieve it to policy and procedures.
Well, I agree actually with a number of those items in in the fact that. We're able to incentivize. Private entity to do an aquifer storage program or something by having something in our code that either allows it or incentivizes it. I think that's good planning ahead. I do have to agree with Ann that, you know, for for just the the one project, it might be just a little too narrow. But I do think that we probably don't have, let's say, an aquifer program set up in our land use code or or. How one would go about a large, maybe solar array, a lot, the largest type of solar array. I think that we should be looking at those for the future.
Thank you, colleagues. I appreciate your attention to this and I wasn't suggesting that a specific project, but I think broader, but I I think this has been good discussion and I thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Yeah, we we've definitely heard the the theme of of water usage, water conservation as as is needing to be looked at. In the context of of the landscaping requirements. I know you've got other water issues like you're discussing beyond that, but. Definitely within the landscaping piece of the code, we can make that a focus. I I did just want to reemphasize one other thing. About both parking and landscaping. It it's 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 an opportunity, especially in the urban character area, to make the standards of the county more similar to those of the municipalities. That's one of the that that has been one of the goals of the urban character area is to try to get better alignment in those. In those areas. And I just want to make sure that point was emphasized. I'll be real fast here on my final topic. It's it's just another type of development standards and it's the adjacency and buffering standards. So this just generally this collection of of standards that apply. When you've got, you know, different types of development adjacent to each other. So nonresidential coming in next to residential or vice versa. Or or you've got an ag property with residential coming in. We started to look at this issue of adjacency with that, you know, that ag residential buffer that was proposed in phase one and and that got modified. And and y'all had a lot of good conversations about that as that was carried forward. There was talk in phase one about. You know, just continuing that conversation and thinking about a broader array of, you know, potential, you know, adjacency situations. And so that's the whole purpose of this part of the code is just to take another look and see if we want to be a little more comprehensive about adjacency and buffering standards. Especially in more urban parts of the county. Matt, anything to add on that?
No, I I think you touched base on that that good. So it's that's plenty good unless everybody has. I mean, I think. That's kind of the second bucket that Matt was talking about. So. Unless somebody has really something that they want to add to that, we'll assume that we're on the right track with those things.
We should touch on Estes quickly too before we can move on.
Thank you. I didn't.
So, yeah. Yeah, Estes is a. I'm sorry, were you going to talk about that?
No, go ahead.
Estes has been pulled forward into the code, the the new adopted Estes Valley ordinance, but. There's the an opportunity in the phase two rewrite to go through and do a better alignment with that. That amendment that was done for Estes Valley. For example, you know, the 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 use table that was created in that Estes ordinance is got some inconsistencies. You know, with the new use table that was created and then the phase one code. And so this is a, this is kind of a collection of things. Just to create better, you know, weave that document better into the overall code. That's a real kind of quick way of saying that. I'm just looking at the clocks, so I'm going to keep us moving here. We've got now just a couple of other bigger categories of issues and these are the the probably the meteor issues. That are going to session with stakeholders and in public. One of them is is animal and livestock issues. And I'm going to give that to to Austin to cover. And then after that, Gabby is going to talk about campgrounds and housing issues. But Austin, I'll let you cover animals.
Great. Thanks, Matt. And we will move quickly. So. This was an issue that we looked at really closely with phase one. We made a lot of progress in phase one, including introducing a tailored approach to. Animal livestock type issues, tailoring based off whether it's in a rural type area versus an urban type area. We added new uses as well as new districts that account for the modern needs of animal livestock type issues. And I should stop and say that as with a lot of these issues, but particularly this one, it came with a whole lot of teamwork and a whole lot of collaboration, especially with. Folks like the AAB, the Agricultural Advisory Board and Jen Cram. And we plan to carry forward that collaborative approach with our phase two issues and. There's just a couple of phase two issues we're looking at here, and those are the animal calculation. Poultry operations, backyard chickens and onsite slaughtering operations. And similar to phase one, we're going to propose a tailored approach to each of those, looking at how we can modify these standards. Depending on whether they're applying in an urban versus rural setting and we can use the framework that we set up in phase one to do that really well. So for instance, moving away from kind of one size fits all approach with the animal calculation standards right now, which. Animal calculation refers to a formula that determines the maximum amount of livestock you can have on any given parcel. And if we were able to tailor that based on the setting of an area, we might be able to get to a more tailored approach and. Move away from that one size fits all that is the current approach. So that's what we're thinking with animal and livestock issues, a lot there. And a lot more discussion to come there, but for now I will turn it over to Gabby and she's going to cover campgrounds and RV parks.
Yes, Austin. So the campground and RV park standards were only minorly updated in phase one. Based on a few staff comments where we clarified some existing interpretations of some of the existing provisions. Otherwise, both of these sections need to be evaluated for accuracy and where improvements can be made. With the potential to combine the two uses into one. And a topic that came up in prior phase one work sessions is the idea for recreational vehicles to be allowed as a form of. Longer term temporary housing, which moves us into our next issue, which is housing types and affordability. And the phase one code started the process of allowing more types of residential uses such as live work units. And in more zoning districts across the county. But looking at additional innovative housing options can further support the county's housing goals. Tiny homes were mentioned various times throughout the phase one drafting and outreach process. But no standards were added, and so they would still be considered a recreational vehicle under the current standards. So. Therefore, they couldn't be used as a permanent housing option. So that pairs well with the recreational vehicle standards and trying to figure out how those would fit in. And then also accessory dwelling units are a big topic to discuss because the current standards are very limited in terms of. Who can live in them and also who and where they can be, who can operate them and where they can be operated. So making those standards more flexible and available to more areas of the county would help expand housing options. And. Those are just two examples, but the intent is to further explore how to address housing diversity and affordability through the code.
I'll just add very quickly too, we are following some of the efforts of some of our municipal. Partners, city of Fort Collins is doing. An effort around housing affordability and housing strategies that Commissioner Stevens is probably very familiar with. And. I believe they have a work session next week on that topic or they're looking to adopt their strategies. So we're. Along with some of those other efforts that are happening throughout the region and can bring some of that knowledge and ideas to bear as we move forward with this. Set of standards as well.
And so I'll just add the last thing to that is. This is this last bucket is meant to stretch out the full timeframe of probably taking us pretty close to September when we get to the adoption. Because we know that there's a lot of substance that has to be covered and and, you know, watching the news here recently. Denver, Greeley, they've all been wrestling with the idea of of number of unrelated people in houses. I mean, there's just so many different ways we can approach. Accessibility and affordability and and some of these housing issues that we're having now. So we've got to be really broad thinking. And and try to think outside the box on some of these things. It's not just about what's constructed. It's how it can be used and. And and provide the greatest benefit for the people that need it the most. And that's why I think Gabby, you did a wonderful job of tying the housing together with the campground and RV parks because as we know right now. Our campground and RVs act in many ways as one of our affordable housing opportunities in the county. And it may be appropriate to formally acknowledge that.
And if I may add just a couple of thoughts. Just an example, an example of the. Addressing the RV issue and considering whether RVs could be a a form of longer term housing. One of the potential problems that that might solve or help address is right now on the East Mulberry Corridor, some of you might be aware of this. We're having. Some serious issues with folks who are. You know, they're they're parking illegally close to businesses like the Super Eight Motel or the Waffle House out there by the interstate. And, you know, the county has been trying to address that with some signage and a little bit more enforcement, but there are issues with trespassing. You know, people living in these RVs but not having adequate hookups. And so they're going into the hotels to use the bathrooms. You know, those kinds of things. And and I think. Potentially this could help address, you know, some of these kinds of problems. And and then on the the other comment I'll make, and I'll stop is that um, my hope is that we keep referencing tiny homes. And I and I'm glad we're looking at that and whether they're on a foundation or perhaps on wheels. But I I hope that's not limiting us to the broader category of. Smaller square footage homes. And I bring that up because, you know, way back when a number of us went. Those of us involved in the Affordable Housing Strategic Goal Objective, we visited Berthitt. And they have some really good innovative stuff there where they're incentivizing smaller square footage homes that are not tiny homes. And they're under three hundred thousand, but you know, but the 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 Berthitt is subsidizing some of the water tap fees. So I just hope we're not limiting ourselves, you know, when we say tiny homes. That's all. Thank you.
And if I could just add in from the Realtor side of things, I I like that we are starting to address. Tiny homes and the fact that while they are technically RVs that we need to have spots for them, we need to. Lighten the land, the the building code to allow some of the construction types that have been proven within these. Commissioner Kofalas, I I have to disagree with you on the fact that working on the campgrounds will help the illegal parking out by the drug dens. I'm sorry. The hotels by the highway off the Mulberry Corridor, because I don't believe those people will go to the campgrounds. They they. They could have anywhere and they choose to park out there because they live on the fringe and. That's that's a whole other can of worms, but I do think that addressing campgrounds will address a potential. Lack of affordable housing that is allowed at this time. So I'm looking forward to this section of phase two with with my hopes. One last thing I will say to staff is at the Chambers Local Legislative Affairs Committee last year. We had a presentation from a company that took everything from quarter acre lot developments. Down to tenth acre lot and smaller developments to give some ideas of what could be possible. And the conversation that we started talking about earlier with Commissioner Barnett about talking to the water providers. We we do need to talk with them about, hey. If we were figuring out some sort of way to incentivize our building codes to allow smaller homes. Is there a way that you can look at smaller water allotments for lower cost to potentially look at a a lower price?
And one final thing is a a plug to our. It's it's not a land use code thing, but in in case folks are not aware and perhaps somebody could put it, I guess we don't have a chat. I don't know what we have. But um, you know, our our Affordable Housing Objective Team, they. There's an affordable housing survey that's out there through the month of February. And and I I think it's gone out to the NOCO Housing Now folks and Chamber folks, but I would really encourage people to look for that. And it takes about ten minutes, but I think it would be very helpful, you know, from the Realtor standpoint and others, you know, to provide some input on on that affordable housing survey. Thank you.
Looks like we had a raised hand from Commissioner Stevens first.
Thanks. So, yeah, I I don't know if I know how to unraise my hand. Oh, lower hand. Okay. So within this discussion, I think the discussion about accessory dwelling units, ADUs is really important too, because I think it'll increase. Inventory. And also it is interesting how restrictive the county. Rules are about it. And I think the city is will be looking, if the city of Fort Collins will be looking at loosening some of the rules around ADUs. So. And I know a lot of other communities are are looking at this. I mean, in Los Angeles and and I think Portland, you know, all have these. More permissive ADU policies. So I think, you know, to get on board with that because I think it's a really. Yeah, I think it's a good way to increase housing inventory. And a lot of people, they appeal to a lot of folks who might have older parents or, you know, looking to make extra income. And so I think that there's some space in in that there as well. And then. John Barnett had mentioned, you know, conversations with the water districts and, you know, as we talk about tiny homes and and and, you know, the tap fees still being really high and. You know, I think that here's just another space where it's probably good for us to initiate those conversations with water districts. Around water, water use and and. You know, I think to have just an open door because I know there's so many water districts, maybe it's seventeen even in our county. And so really having these conversations about. Whether it's, you know, landscaping and trying to really moderate our water use as we go through these drought years and and and. Effects of climate change and then around, you know, tap fees and and could they be less, you know. Because because of these are tiny homes and they probably would not. because because of these are tiny homes and they probably would not be using as much water. And so I think, you know, anything we can do um as commissioners and staff to kind of open those discussions and start having those, I think that that will really be important to a a number of of um pieces of the land use code. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Shattuck McNally.
Thank you. Um, I guess Kristin kind of took some of what I wanted to say and Commissioner Kafalas, but I want to echo that as well. I really am excited to get to dive in and to speak about this piece with ADUs and um um in tiny homes. And I think um I welcome us kind of having a really um broad and in-depth conversation and bring lots of partners to that table, because I think it's an opportunity for us to really address the housing um needs in our communities and and especially some of the areas in unincorporated um Laramie County that have campgrounds or some um properties that are trying to um, I can think of one just up the canyon for me that, you know, has a has a a desire to park tiny homes on them and also have lots of folks that are um people that are uh EMTs and dispatchers who are living in RVs year round and students that are being picked up from the bus to go to Thompson School District. So I think it's a lot of issues that we'd be tackling there. And I'd like, I really like to have us um be intentional with that conversation, make sure I would, I would request we kind of maybe really dig into that um with a very intentional um enough time to tackle that subject with um as much as each of those areas would actually be probably a whole meeting in itself, but kind of really be thoughtful and intentional with how we're gonna plan that time to have those discussions. So thanks.
And and just on that point, I just as a reminder about the process moving forward, the the next time that we come back and have the housing conversation will be an opportunity for us to 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 try to lay out these uh discussion points for you guys in more detail and in a more structured way. And to give you examples of other communities and maybe some just ideas of how different places have tackled this. So so we can do a bit of a deeper dive. We we've got these two topics at the end, the ag piece and especially the housing piece, just because we know they're going to take more time to dig into the details. Uh, Commissioner Barnett had his hand raised.
There is a real major piece of low hanging fruit with the idea of water conservation and land use and taking off on what Sean was talking about earlier. And just the basic fact is that half the water that is treated through water treatment plants ends up in outdoor water use primarily for irrigation. And so recognizing that the idea of being able to move to smaller lot sizes uh can have significant benefits in terms of reduced water demand on the land. So uh that could be used to reduce water dedication requirements, but it also means there's less water demand per unit. And that's we should be reflected in lower tap fees because there's less trees treatment capacity necessary for providing that water. So uh
Great point.
That can have significant benefits.
All right. Great comments.
I know we've moved past the time that uh Matt and Leslie were hoping to spend on this memo. So any uh any final comments, just in terms of the overall scope of the phase two edits that we've that we've highlighted? We're we're going to get into signs and oil and gas in more detail uh now, but just just to wrap this this memo up. Is this still all making sense? Any questions about the process moving forward for this, these, these three buckets of issues that that we've described?
And to add to that really quickly, to any input around particular groups or um people that we should be reaching out to to make sure we include in these different topics. I think you've named a number of them tonight and that's really helpful. But if there's anything else you can think of that we should be um considering as we put together a more thorough community engagement process around each of these topics, um, let us know. And it doesn't have to be tonight, even if you think of a group next week, you know, let us know.
All right. Well, we made it through the big list and now we get to kind of drill down a little bit into some specific issues. Um, um, that are in that first bucket of items that we really want to take charge on um and and get attacked. And so because we think that it takes merit, it has merit to deal with them sooner than later. Um, so what we're going to do is we're going to, was the idea to jump into oil and gas, Leslie, right now?
Yeah.
Into oil and gas, and then we'll come back and we'll talk a little bit about sign codes after that. Um, and so with that, I'm going to kind of turn it over to Leslie. She's going to lead off the conversation with oil and gas.
Okay, thanks, Matt. And um, I think you're going to quickly flash up on the screen a a process diagram. So whenever you have an opportunity to put that up, that would be helpful. Uh, but I think first of all, we want to jump in and start with saying, I we know um commissioners in particular have had a lot of correspondence on this topic recently. There have been questions from the public and um I will own up to the fact that we may have not communicated as clearly um the intentions around the project that, you know, we definitely as staff at the county see it as being very important to make sure that this is a a thorough process and that there's public opportunity um opportunities along the way. And um we'll talk about what that looks like and what the different steps may be. Um, and then uh get some feedback from you about whether you think we've scaled this right. I think that said, um, I think you're all familiar that we did go through an update process last year in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. There was a lot of um helpful input, I think, during that process, and we certainly anticipate potentially dusting off some of the comments that we received then. And many of the ideas, we had speakers from the state and input from many different organizations and components uh groups from the community. Um, we know that not everybody was satisfied at the end of the process with all the pieces that came out of it. Um, and so there may be parts that need to be relooked at. Um, we do anticipate that um, you know, our process and Matt will get into the details of what our standards do and say and include in terms of um process and particular standards. Um, we have the opportunity to raise our standards to the level of the state standards and exceed those standards in some cases. And so we would anticipate going through a methodical process of looking at where we are with our procedures and standards and then giving some basis of comparison um for you all to consider uh as far as what our standards say, what the state says, uh what other comparable communities are doing, what input we're getting from the public and different groups and in community organizations, and then present that to you as a way to make some decisions going forward about how to amend our standards. Um, so um, so I just want to assure you all that we're, we definitely are anticipating that this, you know, needs public input. Um, it's important. We want to do a thorough job. Um, but we don't anticipate starting from scratch because we do have the standards in place. So we would imagine going through and looking at the standards we have and then comparing them and moving forward with amendments. Um, there also are a number of topics that you're hearing feedback about in your correspondence, such as air quality monitoring and and some of those topics um may end up being programmatic policy topics that would uh could be addressed on a parallel track and as a discussion that might um overlap with this, but maybe something that you would want to particularly the county commissioners continue conversations with some of the municipalities. Um, it's probably a budget conversation. Really, the health department might take the lead in something like that and looking at scoping and that sort of thing. So we do anticipate that there um could be a number of topics that rise out of the feedback that you're hearing that might end up being more policy or programmatic kinds of things that wouldn't necessarily end up within the the regulations, kind of like some of the earlier conversations you were having about water, for instance. So um, so that's a little bit of context. Um, with that, I I'd like to just zoom in um to this chart that Matt's showing, which um is a lot of different boxes to get us to April, really. But um, so we are anticipating a fairly uh um efficient process to update and amend the standards. And I think the reason for that is because the state completed its rulemaking process. We have anticipated the need to amend and update our standards to um align with or exceed the state standards. And so we think it's achievable to do this within a a three to four month timeframe. That said, um, we also know that if there are parts of this that get more complex or need more discussion, it might take another month or two. It could take a little bit longer, but I think our initial proposal was to say, let's um keep this fairly focused and move move through it and see if we can accomplish this within a three month timeframe. Um, we do, if you can see the chart here, um the, there is a questionnaire that's online right now, and that's really the first of opportunities to get gather broad input from community members and see what issues are of interest or concern um to members of the community. They can also email and and share information in other ways. Uh, we put that out just through the end of the month, so we can start to get a sense of what people are thinking about and interested in. That's the first of many opportunities. So if you actually see the stars on the chart, we also anticipate that um in the week of February uh twenty second, we would do a virtual open house, which would be an opportunity for members of the community also to talk about the issues and topics of concern and interest to them around oil and gas. Um, we would then also be as staff preparing some analysis uh to be ready for you all to have a future conversation on May, at your March tenth work session, and also to be ready for public review um, starting March fifth uh so that we could then have additional input that's a little bit more focused around that comparison and the analysis. So we'd go through and again, Matt will talk about the particular topics, but what are our procedures and how do those compare to the state and other communities? What are our standards around setbacks and how do those compare to the state and other communities? Um, and what choices might meet we have as Laramie County to adjust or amend those? So that would be the analysis that then uh we seek your feedback and input around as well as the community members' feedback and input around in later March. Um, uh, and then Mark's uh work session in March. Uh, we would imagine also then having a draft that would be ready for review and input in early April um going into those hearings. So once we've heard the feedback and input around that analysis and some of the different options, um, then we would prepare a draft or review for public hearings. And so uh, the public would also have an opportunity to give input to that draft and propose changes or amendments to the draft um at hearings, both of the planning commission and then the county commissioners. Um, and I would say that if we get to March and April or this draft in April, and if there are certain issues that uh seem like they need more attention or are taking longer, I think you could give direction as to whether you um want to carry on with the schedule or maybe pull out a particular topic and do more analysis around that and come back to it. Um, or um, you know, deal with that in different ways. So I think there are some off ramps to um this type of schedule so that we could approach things in different ways. So I'll stop there. I see Commissioner Shattuck McNally, you have your hand up.
Thank you, uh Director Ellis and Leslie. I'm not sure if I should, how you would like to be addressed, so let me know how I should do that in this meeting.
Leslie's fine here.
Okay, thank you. Um, I I'm um, I agree, I'm glad to hear, um, first off, thank you for saying we'll have that document to compare um current regulations to the state and to other communities. I'm very glad to hear we'll have that added. But I I want to go back, if you don't mind. I um, I wanted to ask a question about um the air quality monitoring, um, about it not being in the land use code. I know some other neighboring um counties and stuff do have that in code and um some of the um local governments have that in code. So I just, I'm just wanting to kind of get some more information. Like Boulder um county has some of that in land use code and I, I'm just kind of trying to understand. Um, you know, I'm still kind of transitioning this process. And um, so um, if you don't mind answering, I just had a quick question about that, if you don't mind.
Yes, and and when I say um uh air quality monitoring may be more programmatic, I'm thinking of um Mr. Bean uh presented some information, I think, at last week's administrative meeting about the program in Boulder County where some of the municipalities in the county are working together um to fund an air quality station that tracks the source of emissions and that kind of thing. So that's the kind of thing that at a regional scale is really more programmatic. Um, there is air quality testing and monitoring and and so forth that happens on sites. Um, and those types of issues um are addressed in a regulatory manner. So that's where you might draw the distinction. And Matt could probably touch on a little bit more um some of those types of regulations or Leah, if she's um still available to. And we work very closely with our um health department partners on really all of those issues, um whether it's regulatory or programmatic.
Yeah, and 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 as we jump into the topic here in a few minutes, just to hit the highlight of that, because because the conversation's on the table. Um, air quality type things, you can put air quality standards in there that say that um you know, as part of a proposal by an oil and gas operator for approval of an application in Laramie County, they need to demonstrate how they're going to comply with their quality standards and how they might be able to um monitor that as part of their operations. But I think what Leslie's saying is, once you step out of of the the operator doing the monitoring and whatnot, if it's going to be the county doing monitoring, that becomes a policy and a program issue for the county, because that's going to take um various resources from financial resources all the way to staffing resources that you guys will really have to delve down into and discuss amongst yourselves, the commissioners um in different sessions to decide, is that the angle that we want to approach air quality at? And it may very well be that we do. Um, so um, yeah, great question though. You're muted.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to be respectful and um and I've been on Zoom a lot today. Um, yeah, I'd like to explore that a little bit more and um and dive into a little bit. So just um, thanks for answering those questions. Um, appreciate that.
Yeah, I guess I'd just like to say that um we need to be careful with regulations and are they health regulations that the health department needs to be regulating versus land use regulations? Um, and what is CDPHE's role versus what is local role? Um, and then also there are lots of other polluters other than just oil and gas and treating everybody the same.
That's a good point. Thank you.
I'd like to ask a question that I know um Sean had mentioned, and it's it's um and and this is a broader question. It's really like, wha- what are we trying to accomplish with this update? Because there are a robust, more than one year long process, including substantial public outreach stakeholders and such. And and that resulted in a um, what I thought was a pretty good compromise in the current um rules, the land use rules as it relates to oil and gas and especially siding of oil and gas. And that was April of last year. It's been less than a year. I don't know if we've had any new um oil and gas permits or if this is, and if it is, if this is just a direction change as a result of leadership change, that's that's fine too. But I I would like to know if if that's if that's what we're doing is because I think the public needs to understand that. I see, I see Commissioner Shattuck McNally uh smiling, so I think I hit the head, right?
Um, I would say um um, I'll I'll be straightforward with my intent that I know that we're that we're required, you know, required to update our codes to the state um to bring it up to where the state is at. But I think I stated at a administrative matters or work session a couple of weeks ago that I want to um listen to the constituents and where I'm where I'm coming from, I'm I'm not going to speak for my colleagues today, that I want to look at what areas we can go above those um state um but the bottoms, you know, the state basic level, I'm looking for where we can go um above those that are unique and important for the safety, safety, health and welfare of our Laramie County residents. And that's where I'm coming from.
I'll just, you know, um, kind of echo that and say that, you know, I I do know that there was a robust public process. I also know that there's a lot of folks that didn't feel like they were heard in that. Um, and uh that that have some dissatisfaction with with what was what was passed. And so I think I think, you know, I've heard a lot from those folks, and, you know, I think that, you know, I think that an abbreviated, you know, public comment to kind of get those ideas back into, you know, I, I, I followed the conversation when it happened last year. But as a commissioner, I, I would like to hear some of those concerns again. I think at the, you know, with SB 181, you know, I think that it really gave local communities the opportunity to make those decisions about health and welfare in their communities. And I do feel that, you know, hearing from people across the county, I, I, I feel like that there still are some big concerns about health issues regarding oil and gas extraction. And so I think this is an opportunity to get those, those voices back at the table and see if we can look at some ways, you know, to, at very least, to comply with state regulations. But more than that, to really see if there's some areas where our community wants to protect folks maybe a little bit more than even those state regulations do. So that's kind of where I'm coming from. And I mean, I guess, you know, Bob, in, in some ways, yes, a change in leadership does sometimes make a change in policy. And so, you know, that, that you're, you're not incorrect in, in stating that.
Well, and just, I just want to say, I appreciate that. Well, you're the elected officials. You're the ones who are responsible to, to your constituents, and, and that is what it is. And, you know, all I want is that whatever we come up with is compliant with state law and, and with our comprehensive plan. I think our comprehensive plan is a fantastic document, and that's really our, as a planning commission, our guiding document. So, but yeah, I'm looking forward to the discussions going forward.
And I, I just want to mention one more thing. This is not a knock on any of the work or that the planning commission did. And so I, I guess I want that out there, that it's not to say we think you did a bad job and we want to redo things. It's that we want to, you know, we want to review it. And I know that you did a lot, you and the planning commission did a lot of hard work. And I know that these decisions aren't easy to make, and that it, that it is hard to achieve that balance. And so I, I definitely want to know that, that it's not out of the, the fact that we don't appreciate the work that you did, or that we didn't think that, you know, that you did take public input into the decisions you made. So just, just so you know that, that, that I didn't, I wanted to make that clear.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, Bob, I just, I also want to echo that this is not us saying, I, I can honor and value all the work you did. I participated, as I said, in that comprehensive plan process. I attended most of those meetings and was very excited about that process and the public input. And I did follow closely the work that you all did on these initial like gas regulations. I just feel it's an opportunity for us with the timing of the state regs and SB 181 getting in place and having this phase two, that we can do things that are kind of the Laramo County way, what's best in the, in for the interest of Laramo County. You know, for instance, you know, I noticed that we have, you know, just an idea or something I wanted to address was, we seem to have allow in this industry in every zone throughout Laramo County, from what I can tell. And I, I know other municipalities only allow that in industrial zones. So those are kind of some questions I have that I'd like to revisit. And also, I know in the past, the commission, the commissioners said they didn't want to have input. They sent a letter to the oil and gas commission that they didn't want to have input on the current pending regulations or current permits. I would like to ask my colleagues, my fellow county commissioners, I'd like for us to explore, and we submit a letter to the state oil and gas commission, saying we would like to have, we have new direction of the board. We'd like to have input on the current pending applications and some conditions that are, are pending. And so that's a kind of a change that I think you're going to see. And so, you know, again, this is not a, a comment on the work of, that you've done, and we honor and value that, but just an opportunity after listening to our, the constituents and the concerns and kind of some things that we have wanted to focus on going forward. So I hope that helps. And, and thank you for asking that question. I think it's a great question, and great to get that out in front and get that addressed.
And Bob and colleagues, there's not a whole lot I can add to what's been said. I, I think we need to stay focused as much as we can in a balanced way on, you know, what the state law says about, you know, protecting and preserving public health and the environment. And I want to make sure that we achieve that, you know, based on all the inputs that we're getting.
Well, and I just, I just wanted to comment, just on, on the timeline. I mean, I, I, I think that there's there, I, I like that there's a lot of places for the public to plug in, and I'm hoping we can kind of remind people what that website is for that questionnaire. But I also like the idea, Leslie, that you suggested there's off-ramps, because I do feel like if we're sort of feeling pressured at some point, you know, mid-March and saying, wait, we, you know, we just aren't providing enough opportunity, or we're, we're not, we're not able to incorporate all the ideas that we're hearing to pull back and, and maybe give this some more time. And I don't know how my, how, how others are feeling about that, but I think that that, that seems like a good process going forward, knowing that if we, if we're feeling rushed in any kind of way, clearly, like, we're, we're revisiting this topic a second time. So we want to get it right and not be revisiting it a third time. And so I think that, you know, ta, taking our, taking enough time to, to hear the public input and to, to make a good decision is really important here. So I, I am comfortable with the timeline as suggested, with the caveat that we, we could pull back if we need to.
If I may, Matt, can you just make sure that all of the individuals that were involved with the oil and gas study committee are invited to these open houses, so that they understand that the work that they did might be subject to review with SB 181? I think it would be important to have their input as well.
Yeah, I, I, I maintained the list of all the participants from last year. And, and so my first email that just went out last week was, was sent to everybody. Regardless of where you were on the issue or whatnot, it's gone out, and we'll continue to provide that notification as we come up with different steps in the process that people need to be notified. We'll keep our webpage up to date and, and try to keep people informed on all those things.
If I might, Matt, can I just ask, that you brought up the website, is, I know you said, I got copied on that survey. Where, is that on the website? How is that being shared? I'm just curious, because I, I haven't had time to look for that, and I just wanted to make sure. I, I plan on sharing it out to, so we can get input, but I, I didn't know. Again, I haven't had time to look on the website. Is it there, or where is it at?
Yeah, it's, it's on the website. I can, I can, what I'll do is, I'll provide you a direct link to it. When I did the email blast that I did to everybody, I put the direct link to it. So all you had to do is click on it, and it took you into the questionnaire. There are two different websites on the county right now. One is at laramor.org/planning. And then you go down and you look under the oil and gas rigs. That was from 2020. And it contains a lot of different information in there from what we did during that process, but it also provides linkages to COGCC's website and some of those things, so people can use that. In order to keep the two websites from getting mixed information, what we did was, if you go onto that website, there's a link, you push it, it pops you over to the, what we're going to be doing with this amendment. And then there will be new information that's posted under there, and that's under the, the land use code update section. And then there's a tab under oil and gas. So I'll provide you a direct link, so that if you want to send that out, you can send that out. The questionnaire closed down today, but I can reopen it for another week. It's, it's not like we're on a critical path there, and, and we can get a few more comments if that's, if that's desirable.
I would like that, but I, I don't want to speak for my colleagues. So I, you know, I don't know where they think, but I, I feel like, especially tonight, so we have so many folks on the call. Maybe some of them is the first time they've heard about it. And so I just like to make sure.
And I was looking at the list, and most of them are on my, almost all of them.
Okay, well, that's, that's good to know. That means that your, your email blast or sent out was.
Because in that big blast, I, I told them how to link up to this meeting, otherwise people probably wouldn't have known about this meeting.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Thanks, Leslie. I, I really appreciate you letting me ask those questions.
Yes, ma'am.
And commissioners, we know you had some other questions about viewing projects with COGCC and, and that sort of thing. And those topics are probably more germane to Board of County Commissioners. We thought we could, maybe Matt could give you a quick update on some of the information he's learned from the state, and then we could come back to you in a Monday afternoon work session and continue that conversation with you and get more feedback at that. March 1st work session is the first opportunity we have. Next week's a holiday, and we're booked until then. But if you're okay with that, we would continue the conversation there. But I believe, Matt, you have a little bit of updated information to share just tonight for the good of the group, right?
Yeah, just to stir the water up a little bit, I do, on, you know, to get the conversation going. So, you know, I, I've taken a chance and, and delved into the topic again. I, I would say the last nine months or 10 months after adopting the regulations, I delved into the code so heavily, I didn't keep up as much as I probably should have with the topic. But, um, I'm going to go real briefly. In a few minutes, I'm going to go through what's in the actual regulations, what, what sections cover and some of the highlights there. I did recently have a conversation with the COGCC, a couple of people there. They used to have a point of contact, and then for some reason or another, that's all been lost. So it's really hard to find somebody to sit down and have a conversation and try to figure out how things are going. And the conversation that I heard, and, and thank you so much to Deb Bajork for raising the issue to me, is that the state has made a decision in January, and that was on January 15th. And what the decision that the state made was that for any oil and gas applications that were in the process up until January 15th that weren't approved by the COGCC, those are falling off their application list. And so all those applications will have to, if the operator wants to continue with those applications, will have to reapply to the state. So they're going to start that process over and show the state how they comply with the state's new rulemaking process. And I think that goes directly to some conversations we would like to have with the commissioners in a private setting area, you know, in a separate work session. As to, that probably gives us the opportunity then to say that those applications, as they start to be resubmitted to the state, need to come in and follow our process at the same time, which would give our planning commission and our board of county commissioners an opportunity to scrutinize and multiply approve or deny such applications based upon state statutes and anything that we might have in our regulations. So those are some conversations we need to have in the very near future with all of you, the three of you commissioners. And, and we'll approach you in the next couple of weeks about those, those topics.
Matt, a question, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for that update and the clarification regarding COGCC and, and, and applications, I guess, need to be resubmitted. But given that our local oil and gas regs are, are somewhat in flux, if, if, if you're suggesting that we need to be evaluating those applications that go to COGCC, how would that work if we're still trying to finalize our regulations?
Our current regulations establish, and we'll go through that here, I, I just as well start into it, they, they cover process. So the state has a process for approving oil and gas permits. So if you're going to, if you're going to do oil and gas exploration, recovery, any of that stuff in the state of Colorado, you have to go through the COGCC and file an application for downhole activity and for surface activity. Our regulations for Laramo County say, hey, while you're doing that, you also have to come over and submit an application to the county. You need to go through the county's special review process, which is a discretionary approval. And you have to show us how you're complying with the state regulations, our regulations, the whole body of stuff, so that we can make a decision as to whether or not that application meets what we think is important for our community. So any of those applications that have to resubmit to the state, potentially, based upon where we're going to go with some conversations in the future, if they have to submit to us, then they're going to have to go through our process. And you, as Board of County Commissioners, will have the final decision in Laramo County as to whether or not that application is appropriate for Laramo County. And if you choose to deny it based upon some valid circumstances, then that would be passed on to the state that the county doesn't approve it. And then the state isn't able to approve it, because Senate Bill 181 says the state has to listen to the local community. So that application would die.
That's helpful, Matt. I'm just, the example of setbacks. So currently, our oil and gas regs say for residential 1,000-foot setback, but the state says 2,000. How do we reconcile that?
And, and again, I'll go through those regulations in a minute. But we now, the state now has regulations, and I'm going to put an exhibit up, because I think it's going to help the conversation. Tell me if you can see this. A thumbs up from somebody would be great. Thank you. So imagine for a minute this gray line that is on the, on the exhibit. That is where the state of Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation District Commission's regulations were in this gray line. Senate Bill 181 came out and said, hey, we've got to raise the bar, and we've got to start treating oil and gas differently as a land use option. And so the state legislature said that bar that was at this gray dash line needs to be elevated up to this where it's now a black line. And that needs to take into consideration things like the environment and wildlife, health, safety issues as it relates to air quality, those types of things. And so the state worked on those regulations since we adopted ours. They've been working on those, and they have now set this bar up at this level. And our regulations, because we adopted them earlier to put something in place, because we had nothing in place at the time, fall somewhere between this gray line and this black line. And so we, we cannot operate below the state standard. So when it comes to setbacks, if this county setback standard in our code says 1,000 feet, and somebody submits an application tomorrow, they have to meet the state standard for setbacks, which is now 2,000 feet. So our setbacks are not valid right now. But the state setbacks are, so they're in place, and we would then evaluate that application based upon those increased standards. And that, so what this exhibit says is, the bar has moved up to here. We need to move the bar to be at least at the state level, if not exceed it. That's why we have these arrows going up, is we can exceed the state regulations. And so we need to identify those areas of regulation that we think are important to exceed state standards, and that's part of this process. What we cannot do is we cannot operate below that bar. So right now, we have to operate and use in part the state regulations to fill the gaps where our code doesn't.
Thank you for answering my question, Matt.
Did that answer it adequately, Commissioner Falls?
I think this, I think it's important also to recognize that when you look at our code in 17.3B1, that's where it talks about the 1,000-foot setback. But it also talks about, you must comply with the COGCC, whichever is the greater setback. So we're at the state level. The other thing that provision says in subsection two is that on a case-by-case basis, the board of county commissioners, if they believe it's necessary, could set a greater setback than that, if they thought in that particular instance it was needed. And so I think it's important to just sort of recall that there is some discretion left for the county, the board of county commissioners with that. For what that's worth.
Great point, Frank. Before I run through the regulations real quick.
For a very long time during our meetings, you know, we, we wrote it, we suggested that it be written in such a way, and Matt Goble can say that, he just dealt with us. We argued with each other back and forth a lot on that. And to be able to provide the, the county commissioners with discretion as they thought was appropriate, but still meet the minimums. So, you know, I know that's going to continue to be an interesting discussion.
Okay, so.
Matt, before you dive in, I think we probably should do a quick time. Matt, before you dive in, I think we probably should do a quick time check because we are probably running past time on this topic to allow time for signs. But I know this is a topic of great interest to everybody, so can you do this fairly quickly?
I was going to hit it real high. I'm not going to try to go through step by step in the code.
Okay.
What I wanted to say is, I looked at the state, there's a 400-page document or a 300-page document that they put out that documents all the rule changing that they did. So, I mean, they did some major changes down at the state. And that's not just COGCC. So the COGCC, which is Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission, they regulate oil and gas, air quality regulations and some of those other things like water quality regulations rest with the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. And so not only are we looking at the regulations that come directly out of COGCC, but we're also taking into consideration rules that are in place at the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment or the Air Quality Control Commission. So there's a whole lot of things that are in motion here, other than just the COGCC regulations. And so, you know, some of the quick things that the state changed, yeah, they rose the bar up to 2,000 feet on setbacks. However, they created four or five different off-ramps where a property owner could come in and justify reasons for having a lesser setback. We don't have to follow that. We can adopt 2,000 as our standard and there is no going below that. Or we could be a little bit higher. Those are conversations that we're going to have. And that's the purpose of some of those public discussions is to identify where is the state doing an adequate job? And where should we be escalating ourselves above that and identify those rules that need to be updated? Our code was written in many regards, as Frank was saying, not around developing a bunch of standards and saying thou shalt do this, thou shalt do that, versus you need to supply, you, meaning the operator, needs to supply a plan, whether it's a wildlife plan or an environmental impact and plan that shows us how that meets the body of regulation, both at the state and anything that this county adopts above that level. How are you going to meet those standards? Put that in a plan, show us how to do that. We will get the right people to evaluate that, whether that's our health department or whether or not we need to bring in consultants from outside to help us with that expertise. And then we can present with, to you all as the body of appointed and elected officials, that this meets or exceeds the standards and we support the application or not. And then you get to decide whether you agree with that or not and make a decision on those applications. So we're going to go through topic by topic, you know? What are we going to do about leak detection? What are we going to do about air quality standards? Is the state doing adequate or do we need to step above that bar? Are setbacks, you know, where do we really want to end up with setbacks? Are we doing an adequate job with notification? Do we need to expand that? But we also need to understand that when we talk about those things, that there are, if the county adopts certain standards, we could be imposing upon ourselves the need to put into place programs that would cause us to have to come up with financial issues and other things to address staffing levels and whatnot around that. And so we've got to be conscious of some of those things. So it's a big topic. You know, I hope that we can work together with everybody and come up with some sort of consensus on this and come up with a good body of regulations. I think we got a good starting point. I think that our regulations that we adopted last year were a good starting point. Yeah, they got to be updated and they got to be brought up to snuff. But we need to identify those places where we're going to exceed current state standards. And we'll think about those things and we're going to talk to the community about that and move forward. So without going into great depth on all of those things, you know, the state has new noise quality standards, air quality standards, odor standards. And so we need to look at those and say, are those adequate or do we need to raise the bar? And then we'll work forward from that point forward. And so with that, you know, we'll go into greater details. We go through this process more and more. I would ask Frank to chime in. I know we wanted to hear from him a little bit about, you know, some of the legal issues around some of this. So I'll turn it over to Frank real quick and let him talk about that unless you guys have some questions.
I have a quick two questions because I want to interrupt Frank. But I do want to thank you and Leslie and Frank, because I know you guys, all of you, put a lot of work into this. But a couple of questions that, from what you said, Matt, kind of triggered some questions in my mind, if you don't mind. I'd like to have them in this public forum. So one point is, I know this part of the SB 191 that we can, maybe, because I know I hear regulations and costs and things, is there a point where we can have that conversation about requiring operators to help kind of pay for some of these costs of the regulations or the monitoring and things like that? Where did that come into discussion? And then also, you brought out, you mentioned an outside consultant. I think you said that, and you're, what you just said earlier. And I didn't know if your time outside legal counsel that specializes in oil and gas or an outside consultant firm to help us, you know, look at all of these. Because, and I know you have mentioned to me that all the regulations that the state has done is, you said, a very large document. So I wasn't sure where you were when you said outside person and then the question about regulation costs. So if you don't, I don't know if that's for Frank or whatever. If that's just something a place card holder for me to have that discussion or ask those questions later.
To answer your first question, getting the operators to pay for certain things would probably require us to look at things similar to what we, we have transportation impact fees, for instance. So it's an impact fee. And so what we do with that is we say, whenever you develop a use and it has a high transportation impact, that's going to cause impact on our roads, wear, tear, whatever. And in order for that development to occur, it gets to contribute to an impact fee that helps to maintain those facilities. So it may be that we look into impact fees associated with oil and gas operations to say, if it's impacting air quality and we have to test it and we have to do things, is there a fee that they pay that goes into helping us have a program for developing that? And we'll have to investigate the legalities of that with Frank and his staff and others. The answer to your second question, what I was referring to is inside our current code, it says that if during the review process of an oil and gas operation, somebody submits information that is above the expertise level of our staff, our current regulations say that we can require the applicant to hire a consultant of the county's choice to evaluate that plan and tell us whether or not it's meeting the intent of the rules. And so that was what I was referring to. We're going to try to get through this on a staff level as it relates to rewriting the codes. If it gets too complex or we hit an issue that's there, then we'll have to talk to you about whether or not other expertise would have to come into this preparation of these documents. But right now, we don't have that planned.
Okay, I appreciate it. And again, I'm not trying to make us go over time. I just figured this is a really great and robust conversation. And I just want to take advantage of having you all here. And I really appreciate the opportunity to engage in this conversation. I appreciate Mr. Chair, Mr. Choate and Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kofalas, allowing me to ask these questions.
Frank, do you want to chime in for a few minutes?
Yeah, I'll try to be real short. I don't have much to add unless you all have questions for me. I think the thing to think about is, you know, it's an opportunity, as we've discussed, to look back at the regulations we have, which we had planned on doing. And it's, I think, good to recall that we are at the state level, right? We can't go below the state level. There's already provisions in our code that say, if you all think it's necessary, in some instances, you could go above that. So the question really, moving forward from a legislative standpoint is, are there sections and what are the particular sections of our code that you feel like might need to be revisited or adapted, you know, based on information that we have now? And so the other thing to keep in mind is just that, you know, the status quo now is that anybody that wants to do an oil and gas facility has to come before you and present the specifics of their particular project. So they're not going to happen administratively. That was a big conversation during the entire process we went through before. They aren't going to happen that way. All of them are going to come in front of the County Commissioners. And so there'll be public hearings on it, there'll be a Planning Commission hearing on it. So there'll be lots of opportunity for public input if we get one that's going to come through the process. So I think just it's important to understand procedurally, that's kind of the status quo of where we are right now.
So can I ask a?
This is Lori. Can I ask a follow-up on that? I assume, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot. So if you didn't have time to think about this, I apologize in advance. But I assume if the state is requiring new applications for those that are still pending, that we would treat them as a new application and that the Board of County Commissioners would be able to review them without taking any other kind of action.
Lori, based upon my conversation with the state, that was where I think we were resting at. Is that the state's starting over with those, I'm going to use an example. There was the Kaufman pad or the unicorn pad. Those were not approved prior to January 15th. They have now fallen off of the pending applications list at the state. And they're going to have to resubmit. And because our regulations are now in place, those are considered new applications that I believe we would be able to require those operators to come in and file application with us. And we get to help make that decision, rather than just being a commenter at the state. And we're going to flush that out just a little bit more. And then we'll have a conversation with the Board of County Commissioners in a work session with them about how that works.
I think that's right. But I think we're also going to need to look and see what applications actually come in and then try to deal with them on an individual basis. Because there's a different stages that people may have been at, different ways that people may have gone through the process. And so I just want to, I think Matt's right in what he's saying. But we're also going to need to see when one actually comes in and just make sure we're in line with everything that we need to be in line with.
No, I'll do one last reminder to everybody because this is really a big part of our regulations and what Senate Bill 181 says and what we can and can't do. When it comes to oil and gas permits and our applications, we are only allowed by state law to look at the surface impacts of an oil and gas operation. So where is the pad site going to be located? Is, where is it in proximated housing and this and that? When you start talking about how deep is the drill bore going to go? How's it going to be encased? Is it going to be a horizontal drill? What direction is it going? Under who is it going? That's none of our decision-making. That is off the limits according to law. That's a COGCC strictly decision-making point. So just so that we operate at that level, that we're talking surface development now. But we could say, for instance, a good example would be, we could say that we want to make sure that if there were surface activities such as a spill or some sort of a release or activity occurring on the site that runs off and as part of the runoff, it has an impact on a groundwater well, we can do that because the surface impact is affecting the well. We can't talk about the actual oil well impacting a water well from underneath. We can talk about it from the surface.
Matt, I have a question. So am I correct that probably what we're going to see is you're going to do, and I know Frank's going to do some review of the new regulations at the state level and compare that to the code that we have in 17.0 and say, and let us know like, hey, this has got to be up. This needs, you're going to, we're going to get some sort of rundown on that? Okay, thanks.
Yes, sir. That should happen in March.
We anticipate looking at some of the other jurisdictions too. Weld County, Boulder County, others that have updated standards recently, just to get a sense of comparison from some of the other jurisdictions.
And as well, Leslie.
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry. And as well, Leslie and Matt, you'll be able to take the Commissioners' concerns, put all of that together and bring that back in a later work session. And I apologize, but I feel like we're going down a rabbit hole here when we were just trying to figure out if the timeline was going to work. And I think that we've given some direction to staff where I do believe the Commissioners would like to go. So I just wanted to clarify on that, that we were going to do that.
And Matt, one last thing on my part is regarding the applications that need to be resubmitted, I'd like you to double-check that they're not viewed as pending with the COGCC, that they are going to have to resubmit them under the new, you know, the approved state regulations, the adopted state regulations in November. Because I think that, I want to make sure they're not still considered pending, but that they do need to be resubmitted based on the new guidelines.
I'll re-verify it, but that's what I currently verify with the state.
Are these, are there any, these special review permits that were actually approved by the Board of County Commissioners? No, that's not applicable at all, correct?
No. Since we adopted our regulations, there have been no new oil and gas applications for surface development filed with the state. So since we adopted them, before that, there were several. And so there were applications in process since early 2019 that have been muddling through the state process since then. And if they were, the operators were allowed to do their final push at the state by 20 July 15th. And if they didn't do the final push and get approval, then the state dropped them off their list and said, you start over. You need to resubmit your application and show out meets new standards. And so I would imagine, and we'll talk to Frank some more about this and get a good read on it and talk to the Commissioners about, does that mean that those are new applications that we can then subject to our process? And I'm thinking that we probably would be able to.
Okay, does everybody feel like you got your questions answered on this topic? And are you ready to move to signs? I'm seeing some, so.
I'm really looking forward to the science discussion.
It's probably been a long day for you. I know you had a long workshop this afternoon too. So thank you for that input. That's really helpful. And we will continue with that work and have many more discussions on the topic with you and community members who are interested as well. So with that, I will hand it to Elizabeth Garvin, who is covering the sign topic.
Before Elizabeth jumps in, the packet that I sent you, the sign code section was like about really short. I attached the wrong attachment. So I'm going to share on the screen what should have been attached to your packet. And Elizabeth will speak to that this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Good evening, everybody. As I get started, can I do a time check roughly? What are we thinking about here? Two minutes on signs? Okay, for five hours on sets, we'll do that in another meeting, I'm guessing.
Eight o'clock, we should probably try to have, if we can, wrap up by 8:30. I know Commissioner Doherty had a brief question we might want to touch base on real quick, but.
We have a brief topic after this one as well, but we can do that one quickly. So, yes, so.
Okay, thank you both. Okay, everybody. So we're also getting started with the sign code update. We are not starting from scratch, but doing a targeted update. That'll be mostly focused on strengthening the connections between the existing sign regulations and the changes that the county adopted in the Phase One update to the land use code. So we have four priorities that we've identified in this process. And the Board of County Commissioners has given us some preliminary thoughts. And so we've worked that into our bullet points here. We want to make sure that we more clearly link the sign code. We want to make sure that we more clearly link the sign code purposes to the county comprehensive plan purposes and county sign priorities. Purposes are really important in sign regulations and we want to make sure that everybody who is attempting to use the sign code can understand how it links back to the overall plan and approach for regulation in the county. We want to also balance the signed code across the different county character areas. And for the benefit of those who didn't have the luxury of discussing character areas many times last year. Really, the new land use code thinks about the county in, in the different ways that development takes place. So there are agriculture and conservation areas, there are rural areas, there are rural employment areas. There are areas within and near the growth management areas. And we think that one of the ways that we can really improve the functioning of the sign code in the county is to have the types of signs that can be used and the sizes of signs that can be used match up better with the different parts of the county. And then in the, in and around the growth management areas, work better with the county's municipal partners. So we're taking a look at not only the Laramie County Code, but the sign codes for all the municipal partners. And Matt and Leslie have started a conversation with your municipal partners about their concerns with signage. And so we'll bring that back into the process and talk to you about that. As always with signs, we have some legal parameters that we want to meet. And we want to make sure that we've clarified the technical and enforcement provisions. There are people that use the sign code part of the code that really don't use other parts of land use code. And we want to make sure that users can find the information they're looking for and get themselves to the code. And then finally, we do want to update the current regulations with an expanded menu of information about sign types. And to address ongoing technology changes. So we're going to touch on regulating electronic message centers. We're going to make sure that all of the different types of signs that are permitted in the county have some basic instructions in place. So people know if they're doing a monument sign or a pole sign, what the general standards are, and then they can figure out what the standards are for the zone district where they're located. So that's the basic overview. We're, as I said a minute ago, just getting started on this. We've touched base with a number of people on county staff that work with signs on a regular basis to start collecting information. And we're here tonight to reach out to you to hear about issues and get some guidance for where you want us to look and want us to explore going with the regulations. Similar to oil and gas, this is one of the first up, perhaps first adopted parts of the phase two part of the project. And we do have some public outreach. Matt and Leslie have already posted a community questionnaire about signage. And so that's been open for about a week and a half. We are here talking to you this evening. After we move away from this session, we're going to start drafting and we're aiming to get preliminary draft out to the community later in February. We'll come back and talk to you about what's in that draft and what we heard about the draft. And then hopefully gather some more community input about the full draft. And then finally look to move into a public hearing process. So that's kind of the short and sweet of it. And you know, again, I'm going to step back and take notes, listen and want to, want to know what you want to hear back from us about as we move through this process. So Matt or Leslie, did you want to add anything to that?
I think that you covered that very well, Elizabeth. You know, really there's, she hit the high points of the things that we want to do. So think about signage and think about context and give us your feedback.
Leslie, I think Leslie in particular, well, what we're, we're proposing in the sign code updates, will that address some of the concerns? And maybe Sean could help me with this. Will that address some of the concerns raised by Red Feather Lakes folks regarding some of the issues related to signage up there that involve the state and all of that? Could you address that, please?
Commissioner Doherty, do you want to jump in and explain what those issues are? Just so we're all talking about the same thing.
Well, the, the TOD signs, the tourism oriented development signs that the state puts up on the highways are, are very difficult to get done in the more rural areas because the state, honestly, if I recall correctly, doesn't really have the manpower to do it. But when this was brought up in front of the commissioners a couple of years ago, a couple of phone calls were made. I, I, I'm sorry, I don't remember by whom. And this got done pretty quickly. And I do believe that a part of this revision is going to talk about that of, of having signage on other properties for directional purposes. Matt, am I summarizing correctly that the county may take, may allow for some of these signs to be done and not have to rely upon the state to do it?
Well, two things I can touch base on, when we did the sign code back in, I think it was around 2005, we identified that there, that there was a different sign need for some of the rural areas and we call it wayfinding signs. And wayfinding signs, so there's the state, as you dive, drive down I-25 or down some major roads, you see those blue signs that say, hey, there's a gas station ahead or food and lodging has a picture of who's up ahead at the next exit or whatever. And then other times you'll see another type of sign and they're generally brown that'll, that maybe point out a point of interest or some sort of specific thing. Those are wayfinding signs. And the state of Colorado has a program that covers state highways. We don't get to do nothing with that. That's their plan. And they have a company that applicants work with to get signs installed. And you have to be so close within a certain distance of a state highway and all these parameters in order to be eligible to get a wayfinding sign. And so during early in, when we did the last sign code, what the county did was it adopted its own wayfinding sign program for major county roads like 74E or some of those that are off of this. Red Feathers is so far from 287 that the state won't give them the wayfinding sign. So how can we do wayfinding signs along 74E that can serve the benefit of people in, in Red Feather Lakes? And so we have our own program and that's run through our engineering department because that's considered signage on a road and, and they have to look at various sign requirements as it relates to transportation issues and whatnot. And so that's out there. And my understanding, I heard from some people up in Red Feather recently at, at the Red Feather Lakes PAC meeting that one of the concerns is, is it doesn't seem that our, the company that they're working with is being effective at maintaining those signs and that the program isn't a hundred percent effective. So we might have to reinvestigate that. We'll try to take a good look at that with this process, but because it's somewhat of a separate process, I don't know if we'll get to a solution on it.
Well, I guess the short answer to Commissioner Cofallos's question is no, they don't really belong in the standards, but it is something we can look at on a parallel track.
Yeah, I thank you, Leslie and Sean and Matt, I appreciate providing those details. And I think we need to figure out a way to resolve this because this is still an issue for the folks up at Red Feather Lakes and other rural parts of the county. Thank you.
If I just, last thing, Leslie and Matt, and also for our consultants, on page three of the packet that you sent out, it does mention considering including standards to allow private offsite wayfinding signage on private property. And this could be a way to solve that, whereas the business is actually quote unquote renting the space from a private owner. And therefore they're maintaining their own sign. So I'm interested when we get to that point to talking more about that.
Absolutely.
Yep. It really looks like we're looking at placement, height, colors, does it flash? Does it not flash? How big is it? Everything but content, we're looking at that.
I would say that's correct. But we, in, in the, in the idea of keeping it targeted, it's not likely that we're going to come back with a whole round of recommendations to change sizes across the board or, you know, preferred sign types across the board, but we are taking a look at it. Yeah.
Um, I guess I just wanted to say that I, I'm glad that we're going to look at different character areas and, and work with the municipalities because I know that there's been friction in the past. And so I think that's really important. As we look at signage and growth management areas and, and other areas that are close to municipalities that have, you know, particular regulations around signs, you know, that, that we respect that and that we're kind of having those conversations. So that kind of doesn't come to a head and we don't face some of the issues that we have in the past. So I think that that, that piece is really important to me. You know, that some aesthetic kind of goes into that, I guess, is, is, and then, you know, for me, I think that, you know, issues like light pollution is, is, is important, I think, you know, as we kind of look at what, you know, how these signs are lit and, and you know, the, the idea of electric signs and, you know, placement of those, I think that that's really important to look at. There again, it's, once they go up, they're probably not going to come down for a while. We've, you know, we know that about billboards and, and things like that. And so I think, I think being really intentional about what we want our community to look like and, and, you know, some of the, some of the maybe detrimental things that can come from signs. I think it's really important there again, it's sort of the opportunity that once, you know, we've, we have billboards in our community that have been up since the seventies or sixties. And so these, these can be somewhat permanent and they can affect some quality of life issues around our community. And so I think it's really important for us to be cognizant of that when we're, when we're looking at the sign code.
And thank you for your diplomatic input, Commissioner Stevens.
I appreciate that comment because I think that speaks directly to the character area part of our code. You know, we created these character areas and appropriate zoning for it. And so as you can see the picture behind Commissioner Green, you know, I mean, we've got a very rural area of the county where signage, you just don't want to plunk a bunch of signage out there and ruin that, that visual scene. And so we need to think about the context. Yeah. In the urban areas, it may be appropriate to have greater amount of signage. And maybe as you get closer to places like Red Feather, we need to have a, an appropriate level of signage that, that provides community identity and stuff like that. So people can find things that's going on. So yeah, we got to think pretty diversely about this subject.
Elizabeth, did you get what you need? And does anybody else here have additional feedback on the sign?
I didn't want to step on anybody, Leslie. And this, this is not our last point of conversation about the subject. And so we'll look forward to your continued participation as we move forward with the draft. I really appreciate these early comments. They highlight some of the important places that we're going to look at. And when we come back to you with a draft to look at, we'll also let you know how we think these ideas get woven into that draft. So we move them forward. So, and I think as Leslie said earlier, this isn't the, since the last place, the last opportunity to talk about this, if something pops up in your head a few days from now or next week or whatever, feel free to feed them back into the process through Leslie and Matt. We're always looking for your thoughts on the subject and appreciate it. Thank you.
Did any of you by chance get an opportunity to take the questionnaire? I put a link in your packet to the questionnaire. I was going to close the, the questionnaire down that to tomorrow, but I could leave it open. Be good for you to go in and just provide us your thoughts. Do you like signs? Do you not like signs? Is it about size? Is it about lighting? Those types of issues? Just give us your thoughts. I'll leave that open for another day so that we can maybe facilitate your comments. If you go into your packet, it's highlighted blue on page three. Both the questionnaire on signs and on oil and gas. So feel free to fill out those questionnaires.
And respectfully, Matt, would you mind leaving those surveys open till the weekend? Perhaps tomorrow's a busy day for some of us and we might not be able to respond to the surveys. Perhaps maybe keep them open until Sunday or Saturday or something.
Yeah, the sign regulation will, I'll keep that open. Oil and gas one is open until March.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cho, I'm sorry. Did Commissioner Pontius have her hand up or was that just asking about the survey?
I was, I was going to ask if that was something that we could share. And I was just going to ask, you might get more feedback for able to share that with, you know, people in our circle of influence.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, thank you all. Commissioner Doherty had a question about updates to phase one. And I believe Matt Lafferty, Lafferty, you have some information on that that we can touch on, I think briefly to answer questions.
So Commissioner Doherty, you'll recall and other commissioners, you recall when we adopted the code in December, that one of the conditions of approval was that the director in her duties can can grant certain changes to the land use code that were by virtue of an error or omission or something without us having to go back through the whole public hearing process. So in looking at, at Commissioner Doherty's question, I think it resolves around setbacks. The O-Open Zone District in Laramie County had dual setbacks and those setbacks where you had to have a five foot side yard or a 10 foot side rear yard setback for properties created prior to November of 73. And any property created after that date had a 25 foot setback from the side and rear property lines. When we had went through the code adoption, it got slated into the, the zone district for O-Open that those would just all be 25 and 25. And I think we're feeling the repercussions of that because there's a lot of properties that the O-Open District had that are relatively small and whatnot. And we didn't really have much discussion around it. It's just where it landed. And we think that that was kind of just an error of thought and we're suggesting that maybe we go back, we're going to talk to the commissioners about making a modification and that modification would probably be administratively done by the director, Leslie Ellis.
I think anything that we find that we would assume to be an error or something that was inadvertently translated incorrectly or carried over, we, I would take it to the commissioners and confirm with them that they too see it as an error or an omission and something that could be changed administratively. And if there's a sense that there was something more substantive to, related to a topic, we could bring it back and take it to the planning commission and have more discussion about it. I mean, I think my intent is to be transparent about any changes that we make. And I don't want to presume something was an error and only to find out later that, no, that was done on purpose and there was discussion about it. So, so that's how I would propose to move forward with anything along those lines that we might propose making a change. And that's a good example of, of such a thing.
Would you mind if I gave a little bit of like background to this? And in full disclosure, in full disclosure to everyone here, part of the reason I figured this out is because I live in a property that is affected by this. Now, after having had conversations with a couple of home builders, I found out that this could really harm housing affordability. What it is, is if we go to the 25 foot setbacks for O-Open zoning, there are many non-conforming parcels in Laramie County that are not at 10 acres or more. And in the neighborhood that I moved into, most of the parcels are under one acre. Mine is about 1.3 or 1.4 acres, but it's very narrow. It's only about 90 feet wide. One builder in particular I was talking to today, built a home in Horse Tooth Lake Estates two years ago. And all in land, water, building, et cetera, it was under $400,000. He's in the process of building one right now. All in, it will be just a hair over 400,000. With this new setback, he would not have been able to build either of those homes. And there are many, many lots, both in Horse Tooth Lake Estates and in Red and in Red Feather Lakes, and those are just the two that I can come up with right off the cuff. Both of those, there have been 17 properties, land properties under an acre sold in the past year for under $100,000. And you can't find that anywhere in our urban municipalities or even closer in. So I think changing this back really could work very well to, to allowing the possibility for people to build homes that are much more affordable, especially when in the Fort Collins area, the median home sale price is over $500,000 now. So thank you for the timing. Yes, it was self-serving when I found out about this yesterday. But digging deeper and deeper into it, I really think it's a great idea.
I think one of the things was we, when we created those, when we chose the setbacks, you know, we didn't want to create a whole bunch of non-conformities out there or, or non-conforming issues. And so we'll take a hard look at this and try to get it right.
Thank you.
You'll probably hear more about this subject when it's not the end of the evening and you're all tired, and so you can digest it a little bit more. So I think that brings us to the end of our land use code Phase Two topics for the evening. Unless anybody has any final thoughts. We did have one additional item, which was primarily to update the planning commission on some of the activities that are happening in the Estes Valley around a comprehensive plan. We did have a briefing with the commissioners, a work session last week, I believe, and informed them about this. So if you feel like you've had enough for today and want to drop off, I will not be offended. I will do a briefer update for the, for this, of the planning commission, just so they know that this is happening too. Because one of the responsibilities of the planning commission is to update comprehensive, is to adopt comprehensive plans. And so there may be work ahead for the planning commission to review and ultimately approve a comprehensive plan update for the Estes Valley. So that's why we wanted to brief you. So very quickly, the town of Estes applied for a grant from the Department of Local Affairs last year. And they were notified in December that they were going to be awarded the grant. And so they are moving forward with that. They've negotiated that grant agreement. And they're moving forward to hire a consultant to support the work to be done, basically, starting in April through the end of next year. They did release a request for proposals and they've shared that with us. And I believe, not sure if it got posted today, but it will be posted on our webpage on the Estes Valley page if people want to see that. Consultants would have to complete a proposal submission by the 25th of the month. And then what we, the county, did is worked with the town to basically include some language to piggyback onto that proposal to say that we would be interested in working with the town to also potentially work with that same contractor to do the planning work and do community engagement with the unincorporated part of the Estes Valley. So that's in the works right now. And we wanted the planning commission in particular to know that that's happening. You all would have an important role as we move forward in working with the community and hearing feedback and ideas about that, giving input to the plan itself and helping to shape it. We would work with the town on some of the technical work and deliverables as well and probably focus in on some of our particular areas of interest, like what happens at the edge of the town and are there particular annexation policies? And what is important for the future of the unincorporated areas and the rural lands in, in the county? And we know that our Estes Valley Planning Advisory Committee in particular is very interested in being part of the process and having a voice in it. So I'd like to keep this brief tonight. So maybe I can stop there and answer any questions that you might have or see what feedback or ideas you have at this point. And then if this is something you'd like to spend more time on next month, we'll probably have more information at that point about how things are starting to shape up in terms of potential consultant teams and, and that sort of thing. Do you all have questions or feedback or commissioners, now that you've had a week to think about this, maybe some other ideas around this? I think we've worn you out.
Yeah, it's been a long day. I, I guess I'm looking forward to hearing what the Estes Valley. Oh, I'm forgetting my acronym. This, this week, yeah, I'm advising board I'm going to be meeting with this week. I'll be looking forward to their feedback on that. And, and I really appreciate the updates. And I'm looking forward to going forward and, and all of us working together and looking at that. So thanks, Leslie.
Okay, so there'll be more to come. And feel free to let me know if you have any questions or thoughts on this. And we can tell you more when there's a little bit more to tell in the next month or so. So with that, we'd probably like to see if there's some interest in adjourning this meeting.
And, and just one last thing. I will, I will post the, this is a recorded item on the webpage so people can come back and watch.
Thanks, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you all. Thank you, Bob.
Thanks. Good night.